Council is now in session, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
You know, we gotta talk about them because they're more complicated than they should be.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings we've received from you. Let us begin this new year with vision and understanding. Help us continue the generosity and compassion of the recent holiday season in your holy name. Amen.
Can we have a moment of silence for Commissioner Allen and his family and his loss? Thank you so much.
Welcome everybody to 2016. I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. We have two new councilmen aboard. We got Mr. Pete Torres, Second District. Welcome Pete.
(inaudible).
And Mr. Scott Rakos of the Sixth District. Welcome Scott.
Welcome General.
Clerk Golick roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Alright, now we're moving on to election of new officers for 2016. Nominations are now open for President.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I nominate Councilwoman Opinker to continue as President.
Second.
Any other nominations for President? Nominations are now closed. We have a, now the nominations are open for Vice President.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I nominate Councilwoman Janet Vanez.
Any other nominations for Vice President? Nominations for Vice President are now closed. I'll have a vote for Councilwoman Opinker. I guess by raising her hands.
(inaudible).
Alright, well.
Yeah.
And then Council.
(inaudible).
Yeah, and then Councilwoman Vanez. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy, more than happy to serve you folks. Okay, moving on to reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I take a motion to accept the minutes from January, December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the acceptance of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims December ninth through January sixth, two thousand and sixteen, for council meeting January eleventh. Beginning with claims dated December twenty-eighth and ending with claims dated January sixth. Claim number one through number three forty-one for a total of three million, three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs on acceptance of the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on acceptance of the claims? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, nine zero. Moving on to public hearing, or is none? Communications.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
Martin Luther King Junior, the Indiana State Bar Association Northwest Indiana Volunteer Lawyers Incorporated Fifteen Annual Public Service Event honoring the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Our dream of access to justice for all. Get legal questions, get legal answers Monday, January eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Talk to a lawyer, free walk-in, no appointment needed. As a service to the public, volunteer lawyers will be available to answer legal questions and give briefs from ten to fifteen minutes. Legal consultation and following the Lake County locations. Tagged at Naco Baptist Church, thirty-seven fifteen Butternut, East Chicago from nine to one. Westside High School, Gary, Ninth and Jerry Street, eleven to two. New Chicago Public Library, Lake Station, two thousand Central Avenue from ten-thirty to six-thirty. The Public Library at fifteen oh five each Commercial Avenue in Lowell from nine to five. Can't make it to these local sites, state way calling and speak to Indianapolis attorneys, January eighteenth only. English and Spanish, eight hundred, two-six-six, two-five-eight-one.
Any other communications?
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm gonna read a letter that I submitted to the mayor's office in regards to the sports complex. And I wanted to be perfectly clear that in no form or fashion have I stated publicly or in private that I was against a sports complex. But this was the letter that was submitted on September eighth, two thousand and fifteen. It says Mayor Thomas McDermott Junior. As Councilman of the Third District, I am writing this letter regarding the future sports complex that may be constructed in the Third District. I have enclosed a list of numerous questions regarding the sports center and would appreciate it if you could or would possibly respond to them and to the best of your knowledge or perhaps would be willing to sit down to discuss the issue. I did discuss with the Chief of Staff and the mayor, we did go over and the number of questions I'll bring up under new and unfinished business.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Will you please have a copy of them, the questions and all, so all the councilmen can have a copy of that?
Sure. At the end of the meeting.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Thursday, January fourteenth, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College at six-thirty PM. On Thursday, January twenty-first, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at seven PM. And also on Thursday, January twenty-first, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center at seven PM. And that is how change happens. One person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinances, third and final passage, there are none. Next will be introduction of ordinances. Clerk Golick.
Item A, ordinance sixteen oh one, sponsored by Councilwoman Opinker. And ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-three fifteen, also known as the Salary and Wage Ordinance for all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of sixteen oh one and refer to council as a whole.
Second.
So motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Higgs. First and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted.
Item B, ordinance sixteen dash zero two, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. And ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-three sixteen, also known as the Salary and Wage Ordinance for police officers and firefighters in the City of Hammond.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
For first and second reading, refer to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Galwinski, is there any discussion?
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I don't know if I should ask for an amendment right now, but this ordinance will need to be amended. As it lists the chief, that does apply to the chief for both the Police Department and the Fire Department. Assistant chief is for the Police Department. And what was omitted was deputy chief for the Fire Department. So do I amend it now or wait? No, okay. I so move.
Second.
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick roll call, vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. The amended version passes, nine zero. Now, is there any other discussion on the first and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second granted. Moving on to resolutions, there are none? Next will be new and unfinished business.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
These were the questions that were submitted to the mayor's office in regards to the sports complex. One was the cost to be the citizens of the Hammond, was the question. Number two was, how will the citizens of Hammond utilize the facility without bus transportation? Three was, why do you feel the need for a sports arena? Number five was, who are the buyers and what dollars amounts will be contributed for the project? Number six, how much money will the city garner from the venture? Question. Number seven, how many Hammond residents will be employed by this facility? Number eight, what prompted negotiations when it started that no one wanted to invest in the Third District because of the location? Question. Number nine, how will it affect the Civic Center? Was the question. Number ten, what will the emissions fee? Will there be a membership available? Question. Number eleven, do you have a survey of the citizens to get their thoughts? Question. Number twelve, who will manage the facility? Was the question. Thirteen, what would be the benefits to the community? Question, affordable housing, streets, et cetera? Question. Fourteen, will any of the proceeds be filtered back to the Third District? Question. Fifteen, how much money will be the city invest in the project without considering the money from HUD? Question. Number sixteen, how will the citizens of Hammond be able to afford this opportunity when it isn't an extra income to pay for the fees? Also, how will it survive if people have no extra income? Question. Number seven, has a study been done to determine if there is a demand in the area for the sports arena? Number eighteen, how will the arena be maintained? Are there grants available to assist with the maintaining of the arena? Nineteen, during the construction phase, how many employment opportunities will bring to the Hammond residents? Number twenty, the daily operation of the facility will be ran by what department? Question. How many will feel plus part-time employment opportunities will be needed to staff the arena? Question. Twenty-one, if there will be a fee to utilize the facility, will the fees be used only to help the facility become self-sufficient so as not to burden the city in the future? Question. Number twenty-two, will a swimming pool in the area taking a loss each year and possible closing one of more? Is it a waste to start another recreational center? Question. Twenty-three, what will happen to Civic Center? Question. Will the arena be addition to or will it replace the newly remodeled without area at the Civic Center? Question. Those were the questions that were submitted on September eighth to the mayor's office. So whoever came up with the idea of making a statement as though Councilman Higgs was not interested in the sports arena is totally wrong. I submitted the letter to the mayor's office and I had a meeting with the mayor and we did discuss this arena. So, there you have it.
Mister President.
Mister Mayor.
We did have a meeting, Councilman Higgs and I, and I asked Councilman Higgs to sponsor the ordinance to carry it through the council and he refused to. Which I was shocked because we're talking about a fifteen million dollar investment in the Third District. So I believe we went to either Councilwoman Vanez at the time or Councilman Spitali or I forgot who we went to, but I was shocked because I figured we're investing thirteen, you know, ten to thirteen million dollars in the Third District. So anyway, yeah, and then Councilman Higgs, they gave me the list of twenty-five questions and I didn't answer them. I'll be honest with you. I'm here to answer any questions, you know, a lot of the questions, I don't know the answer to at this point, but a lot of the questions are sort of leading questions.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
So Mayor, you saying that in regards to you don't have the answer to some of the questions, but none of the questions were answered. And secondly, I can't support an ordinance that I'm not.
That's fine, Councilman Higgs.
So.
So we went to somebody else. That's fine, Councilman Higgs. Don't support it.
I'll allow you to speak, just let me finish. No ordinance has ever been presented to me and no one said that I wouldn't sponsor it, I said I needed more information.
Mister President.
Make that clear and put that in the paper and on the record.
That's fine.
That's what I said to you.
Okay.
I never said I wouldn't support it.
It's fine, Councilman Higgs, you don't have to support it. I don't.
I understand that, if I choose not to, but.
Good.
To be clear on the issue, I never stated that. I never stated to you.
No, when I was, when I asked you to carry the bill for a thirteen million dollar project in your district, you didn't seem very happy. And then you gave me a list of twenty-five complex questions that I had to sit down and answer before you would do it. I said, fine, I'll go to somebody else. And that's what I did.
That's fine, Mayor, but in regards to that particular issue and any other issue as it relates to the Third District in the City of Hammond, I represent the Third and so if there are questions that need to be answered.
Maybe that's part of the problem.
I have to, I have to answer those questions.
Maybe that's part of the problem.
They may not call you.
If somebody wants to invest in your district, if you give them a list of fifty questions and they're all complex, you know, multiple paragraph answers, maybe they say, you know what? Maybe I'll go to another part of the city. Because Councilman Higgs is making it hard to invest in the Third District.
That's not true, I've been requesting information and trying to.
Maybe you're going about it the wrong way, Councilman Higgs.
Mayor, I have physically tried to get businesses on Calumet Avenue where we have nothing but car lots for a number of years. Also on Columbia Avenue where we did a study where the property has been sitting vacant for a number of years since I've been on the council, where the old Eldorado used to sit and we still have yet to have anything built there. There are a number of companies and businesses that may be interested in investing. I don't know who reached out to them and see if they are interested in investing in the Third District. My priority is to make sure that I represent my constituents and find out the information that's being requested.
Okay. Well.
I think anyone that's on here will feel the same way if something was going on in their district.
Actually, I've had conversations with a lot of council members that are excited about an opportunity for Section one oh eight laws to come into the Third District and rehabilitate an empty building into something that's thriving in your school.
No.
Some people give you twenty-five complex questions to answer and say, you know, before I could even talk to you, I want you to answer all these questions. Okay, I'll go to somebody else, it's less difficult to work with.
The reality of it is, Mayor, you didn't have to answer all twenty-five, you could have answered two or three. That may be enough for me to make a decision on whether or not I am interested.
I'm here to answer any questions if you have it about that project, since Councilman brought it up. I'll tell you.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
What are the benefits of this sports complex to the City of Hammond?
We have an empty building there, Councilman Higgs. It's empty and the last plan I heard was a Goodwill Superstore. And we thought, you know what, a Goodwill Superstore probably wouldn't be good for that area. So we came up with an idea and we thought we could address a shortage in the region. Shortage is indoor options for basketball players, indoor options for volleyball players, indoor options for soccer players. And we could turn it into, instead of a negative, possibly a negative with the Goodwill Supercenter there, we could bring in something that's gonna drive traffic. Like a youth sports complex, something that's a positive thing, that could benefit the community and benefit the businesses around it.
And I have one other question.
Sure.
Where's the funding gonna come from?
I told you already, Section one oh eight, we have ten million dollars in an account that has to be spent or else they'll take it from us. And if it's excess, we'll probably have to bring it out of the Fifth District. At this point, we're hoping to cover it with the Section one oh eight. So how much does the tax bill in Hammond go up? It doesn't. Section one oh eight is sitting there, it hasn't been used since I've been mayor. We've been saving it for an opportunity like this. It's in your district, I guess I'm silly enough to think that the district councilman would support that. I was wrong. I've moved on. Thank you.
Mayor, no one ever stated that I wasn't supporting it, I just simply.
You have a funny way of showing support. You have a funny way of showing support for a big investment in your district.
Hey, you may not approve of it, but that's just the way I chose to address it. I submitted a letter to you and if you wanna answer the questions, you can, you have that right.
Okay, any other unfinished business?
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
This is just clarification of a no ordinance, ninety-three dot point zero zero five ambulance users fee. Some people are still confused or think that if they call an ambulance and use it, if they are uninsured, they have to pay that fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars. I had a friend, Marilyn, she gave me the permission to use her name. She had an incident where she needed an ambulance and she had passed out and when she came to, she came to an ambulance. And she was told that she would have paid a fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars. So of course she refused the ambulance and our coworker, the since it happened at her work, took her to the hospital. But I just wanna make clear that the ordinance states on Section C, Part Three, that no collection action is authorized against an individual who is uninsured or against an individual whose insurance company does not pay the entire ambulance fee. In other words, if you don't have insurance, it's a free service. And our City of Hammond is one of the few cities that offers this service. So a lot of people are wary out there. And she told me she had a friend that she thinks she's got about four thousand dollars worth of ambulance fees. Well, these should be voided, but just for information, there is no insurance fee if there is no insurance. Thank you.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be to you, Councilman Torres, are you planning on submitting a letter to that department and requesting so that there's clarity? Because what I'm hearing, you're saying that she requests the ambulance and she refuses because they told her that she would be charged. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, she refused to take an ambulance.
So what corrective.
She thought she had to pay.
So what corrective actions are you planning on taking?
Just for information, we cannot, I can inform Marilyn herself with a letter, but I don't know. I just want the public to know some kind of way that there is no ambulance fee if you do not have insurance.
Okay, moving on, any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is not closed.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Vanez.
We have on the agenda, item A, consideration of mayor's pocket veto. Does Clerk Golick read that or?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Item A, consideration of mayor's pocket veto of ordinance number ninety-three twenty-four and ordinance appropriating funds from local pre-trial division and deferral fund within the Hammond City Court two thousand and fifteen budget to fund part-time salaries sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez.
Point of order, Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
You need to reopen new and unfinished business.
Yes, because I did close it.
It was closed. So I make a motion that we go back to new and unfinished business, I so move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Vanez to reopen new and unfinished business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business now reopened. Clerk Golick.
Item A, consideration of mayor's pocket veto ordinance number ninety-three twenty-four and ordinance appropriating funds from the local pre-trial diversion and deferral fund within the Hammond City Court two thousand and fifteen budget to fund part-time salaries sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move to override the mayor's veto.
There's a motion on the floor to override the mayor's veto, do I have a second? Override of the veto fails.
Wait a minute, what are you?
Nobody seconded it.
You didn't ask the question three times.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think Councilman Markovich should be called a point of order at this point, I didn't know, I mean, he sat there, oh, well, God. Happy New Year.
I mean, you have to ask the question three times. The point, you know.
Alright, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion? We have a first and second.
Mister President.
Councilman Higgs.
In the caucus, there was discussion that brought up, the mayor stated to us that he reached out to the judge and the prosecutor's office was there and a number, their staff, if he wasn't there, the staff was there, in regards to addressing this particular issue. The mayor feels as though for some reason or another. Well, I'm just conveying what was discussed, so the general public understands. What happened was that for some reason or another, I guess, the information, the people are filtering it into the mayor's office, that's the impression I get. The reality of it is though, I think the money's already been spent and all it does is create a problem even further as it relates to the judge's office if we don't override the veto. The money's been spent and what do you do when money's been spent and there's no money?
Mister President.
Mister Mayor.
We talked about this in caucus, I agree with Councilman Higgs on that. This all stemmed from the fact there was a meeting set up, requested by myself to Judge Harkin. We worked together, set up a meeting in my office where we had three members of the council present. We had Clerk Golick and representatives from Clerk Golick's office. We had Hammond police officers, literally like the top three ranks of the Hammond Police Department there. Judge Harkin specifically recommended Clerk Bernie Carter himself be there and not only, excuse me, Prosecutor Bernie Carter be there. And not only was Bernie there, he took his top two lieutenants in my office. And the purpose of this meeting is to fix the wait time, where people have to sit in that hallway outside of our door and wait for two and a half hours to get into a courtroom. They'll have two hundred people, room for two hundred people in their court and there'll be five hundred people on a call. So if you're person number four hundred and ninety-nine, you gotta wait for everybody to get done before you can step into that office. It's wrong. So we requested all these people present, Judge Harkin was with us, and we set it up for my office and everybody showed up to that meeting except for the judge. And we were crippled. So the judge had a representative there and we gave her our recommendations and they were reasonable recommendations based on people that are attorneys, you know, the prosecutor deals in every city and town court in Lake County. Gave reasonable expectations, like if you run a stop sign and you wanna plead guilty and say, you know what, just put me in the deferral program, I'll pay my fee. Right now, you have to show up and you have to stand in that line, you have to take a day off of work basically for running a stop sign. What if you just wanna pay? Oh, pay, I ran it, I pay. No, you gotta show up and stand in that line and add to the problem. Reasonable recommendations. And we gave these reasonable recommendations to the judge's representative. She took it back about a month ago, I called her up the other day, nothing's been done. And I have this ordinance pending on my desk where the judge is saying, please, Mayor, give me more money. Can't do it, I can't do it. You gotta run the court the right way before we start sending more money to you. If you wanna override my veto, do it and I will take down your name and I will give every person that complains in my office, which is every week probably fifteen to twenty, and I will send them right to the person that overrides my veto. I promise. I'll say, this is councilperson so-and-so, this is their cell number, they're the ones that are justifying what's going on in the court. Because it's not right. It's not right. Judge Harkin, I like Judge Harkin, he's a friend of mine. I think he's having trouble right now running the court. And it's spilling over into the mayor's office, it's affecting business the way we do it here and I guarantee you, if you talk to Debbie, she'll tell you the same thing. It's not right. If you're number four hundred and ninety-nine in that line, get ready for a three-hour wait in City Hall lobby. That's not right. Why can't we have multiple court times? Eight o'clock, ten o'clock, just stuff like that, instead of just the cattle call where everybody shows up at one time. If you override my veto, that's fine. I'm not gonna take it personally, I just don't think it's the right answer, sending more money to try to fix a problem. Just don't think it's the right answer. It's a principle thing, Councilman, by the way, I recommend, I also agree with you, Councilman Higgs, it's a principle thing. Harkin already spent the money. So we'll take, we'll take the hit as far as I'm concerned, I'm not gonna sign off on it. I don't want my name attached to it until they fix the way things are going right now.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the override?
Mister Chairman, just one question, have the judge been informed in writing? I know you tried to have this meeting with him, but in writing, can we send him a letter or state to him these problems and maybe he can answer back in writing? We can have something written.
Mister President.
Mister Mayor.
We did, Pete.
Okay.
The Councilman, excuse me. We sent the young lady that attended our meeting, we sent her back with a list of fifteen recommendations. And we're like, okay, if they did ten of them, it would help, right? And we called back and she says, we haven't done any of them. Okay, that's point A. Point B is, even if we veto, even if we override, we still got a problem. Tomorrow, Thursday this week, I guarantee it's piled up. Come over here on a Thursday morning, come check it out.
No.
Friday, come talk to the guy that drove in from Portage the other day. He drove in in a snowstorm because he's afraid he's gonna get a bench warrant. And he gets to court after an hour drive from Portage in the ice, gets here, oh, sorry, court's been canceled today. Did you come to you and complain? No, because you're not here. He goes right into my office and starts screaming at my staff and saying, this is not right, and it's not right, by the way, how could I justify that? Why can't you get a phone call if they cancel court? Send more money to it, that'll fix it, right? We gotta do something. The court's gotta be run better. The court's gotta be run better. We gotta do something. If you just keep sending money to it, you think he's got any incentive to fix the problem?
Any other discussion? Okay, Clerk Golick, we're gonna call for roll call vote. A yes vote is to override, a no vote. Okay, Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
No.
Torres.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Rakos.
No.
Opinker.
No. Override fails. Six to three.
Lord have mercy. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The 30th Annual Black and White Ball will be held on Saturday, February 20th. And I guess if you want tickets, you can call the Phillies Steen Health and Service Center at 219-853-20360.
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Join me for one of the town forums. Congressman Biskowski, Thursday, January 14th, at Crown Point Community Library, 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM, Dyer Town Hall, 2:00 PM, East Chicago City Hall, 4:00 PM, Whippa Park Social Center, 6:00 PM, Purdue University Calumet Student Union Library Building Room with a View. Friday, February 15, 2016, Michigan City City Hall, Council Chambers. 12, Chesterton Town Hall, 726 Broadway, Chesterton, Indiana. Porter County Government Center, County Commissioner Chambers, 155 Indiana Avenue. 4:00 PM, Portage City Hall, 670 Central Avenue, Portage, Indiana. 6:00 PM, Hobart Community Center. 111 East Old Ridge Road. Saturday, January 16th, 12:00 PM, Gary Public Library, Woodson Branch, 501 South Lake Street, Gary, Indiana, and 2:00 PM in Maryville Town Hall, 7820 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana,
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to send a letter to Owana and Phil Talon, letting them know that any future meetings as it relates to anything in the 3rd District, please include me in the process. I graciously will attend any meetings concerning anything in the 3rd District. I so move.
There's a motion by Councilman Higgs to send Phil Talon, Owana Miller, a letter in regards to the 3rd District, any projects upcoming. All those in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich. All those in favor of the letter? Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion granted. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
This morning, I noticed online the passing of Archibald McKinley. Now, I've never met, never met the gentleman. He was a journalist with The Times and he wrote a column about the history of Hammond and throughout the Calumet region, and various people commented and whatnot, but it's maybe akin to what people look at today on Facebook to throwback Thursday. He would talk about, you know, different issues of Hammond's past and everything. So I just wanted to mention that I, from time to time, would read that column and found it relaxing. So I think that, you know, he'll be missed for those that do know him. I believe he was from Whiting, so just wanted to mention that.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Excuse me. The old bank Calumet building, I observed in the last couple of weeks, they got that street blocked off. And I didn't know, I know it's in the 2nd District, but I'm interested in finding out why is the street blocked off? Is the building falling apart or what's going on?
Mr. Mayor.
There's tiles falling off the building into the street during high winds. We're in the process of securing the tiles back to the building. Hopefully, within a couple of days, we'll have the street back open again.
Any other unfinished business?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have a letter sent to Phil Talon, asking him to give us a list who owns all the property north, I'm sorry, south of the railroad tracks on Holman Avenue, all the way up to All Saints Church on both east and west side of the street.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to Phil Talon in regards to the property ownership from-
South of the railroad tracks, under the overpass, all the way to All Saints Church.
From Holman Avenue railroad tracks.
South of the railroad tracks.
All the way to All Saints Church. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
County Councilman Dave Ham did contact me over the last couple of weeks in regards to moving City Hall. I requested a feasibility study, I have yet to receive that. I am waiting for that, so that all minds and hearts are clear. I need to see the study so I can read it and get a general idea. If it's feasible for us to move downtown and it's the best thing that's gonna make Hammond beautiful and prosperous, I'm all for it. If it's not gonna be beneficial to the entire city, I'm against it. All I need is the study.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. Open up for public expression. First speaker of the evening, call out Blake King.
Good evening and happy new year, especially to the new councilpersons. It's good to see you. I'm basically here to sort of clear the air regarding the mediation agreement between the city of Hammond and the two groups that work with those other groups. The only reason I'm here is because I'm continually hearing my name long in various meetings here and in the community, and secondly, because at our December NAACP meeting, Reverend Cobb indicated that that document was going before you all for final approval. I questioned that, indicating that. An executive order is just that, an executive order. So there is no clarity regarding that particular document. October 10th, 2014, the NAACP had a press conference after they had met with the mayor on October 1st, and the two issues they were addressing was the tasing incident and the incident involving a 17-year-old female honor student thrown to the ground with the officer's knee in her chest for jaywalking. Those were the two issues that the NAACP brought. As a result of that, there was about four community meetings that led up to our Hammond Town Hall meeting that was scheduled October 17th, 2014, at the Phillies Steen Center, and there was standing room only. As a result of that meeting, Reverend Pope was selected as the spokesperson for the group. The ministerial alliance was present as well as the NAACP officials. There were approximately 13 or more people that came before the mic expressing issues of racial profiling, and Reverend Pope, at the end of the meeting, indicated that there would be a second meeting addressing their concerns and that he would share with us where we're going from that point. That second meeting was scheduled for December 14th, however, it never occurred, it was canceled. And in between all of that, the same group was sending letters to Councilman Higgs and at the time, Councilman Henhosseh, to declare a moratorium, which that never happened. On November 5th, the mayor called on a Hammond Police Department rules and responsibilities in our community at the Civic Center. It was a big meeting, I'm sure many of you were present. And at that meeting, Ron Mullins, who was the executive director of the Human Relations Commission, indicated that if anyone has any complaints, simply file them with their office. Well, that particular day, on November 13th, I filed a complaint on behalf of the concerned citizens from those meetings, charging racial profiling and the issues of jaywalking. That complaint was faxed to Kenneth Bergeron by the executive director of the Hammond Human Relations. I have here an email dated December 1st where Christina Kantar, corporate counsel, indicated that the Hammond Human Relations Commission had no authority to address any Hammond Police investigations, issues, or what have you. Up until that point, 12/17, we were all here for the press conference regarding the mediation of, between the city of Hammond, Hammond Police Department, Hammond Fraternal Order, and the Hammond Ministerial Alliance and Hammond Branch of NAACP. So this is just to dispel all of the rumors. On November 11th, 2015, I got a call from Kenneth Bergeron, who David Cap had referred him to us. He assured the group that he would keep us in contact with all of the meetings and everything and all that going on with this particular issue. I have several emails from Kenneth Bergeron and several emails from David Cap as well. However, for whatever reason-
Time is up, Ms. King.
Please, just another second, please. I think this is very important when we're trying to get to the truth, especially when my name is involved. And then additionally, excuse me, I lost my train of thought. The bottom line, it is our position that at least four of the signers of that document are not even valid. The signers of Ron Mullins and Mrs. Reedus, based on the email that Chris Kantar sent them, that they have no jurisdiction on Hammond Police Department, so why they were engaged in this meeting and have this signature. And two of the folks from Hammond NAACP-
Ms. King, you take this to the Board of Works.
I don't think so. I'm taking it before you.
Well, you're done speaking. You're done. You're done speaking. We give you ample amount of time. You're done.
Did someone tell you that?
You're done.
I'm not done.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not done, sir.
You're done.
No, no.
Officer, she's done.
Oh, now we're going, officer?
Yes, you're done.
Officer is going to refuse me?
You're done. Well, I'm asking you nicely to, you're done.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
Because as a citizen-
Your time is done. You get three minutes.
I have a right.
You get three minutes, Ms. King, your time is done.
And have shared more than-
Your time is done.
Had you not stopped me, I would have finished. I only had one more point. But someone evidently beckoned you to stop me.
Nobody's begging.
I've said what I've had to say, that agreement is null and void. It was flawed from the beginning and to the end, and something needs to be done, and a further investigation has been requested. Thank you very much.
Allow her to finish her one more point.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I'd like to disclarify the record after Ms. King speaks. You know, if anybody's under the impression that Hammond city officials were driving the bus in this issue, that is wholly mistaken. Let me tell you, I got a phone call shortly after the incident with the Jones family by the US Attorney. And the US Attorney said, Mayor McDermott, I'm gonna give you the name of the gentleman that works for the Department of Justice, I think you should call him. His name is Ken Bergeron. And we did call him. And Ken got together with my chief of staff, my corporate counsel, Chris, and my police chief, and basically outlined to us over the, you know, outlined to us, the ministerial alliance of Hammond and Hammond NAACP, outlined to us what he wanted to see done. And it took a while, and quite frankly, what I was trying to say is, we signed it because it's the best thing to do, is to work with the federal government. Had we refused to sign it, had we wanted to be obstinate and not work with them, I don't know what would have happened. But usually when the federal government wants you to do something, you cooperate. That's usually how I operate. And in this case, they were asking us to cooperate nicely, and we did. And so did NAACP, and so did the ministers. Quite frankly, I've never heard Ms. King's name at all in regard to this issue. I don't know why she's inserting herself into it, but I want you to know that, quite frankly, the NAACP of Hammond, the Hammond ministers, and the Hammond Police Department, and the Hammond City Administration got together and made a deal. And quite frankly, I think most people think it's a good deal. And this system we set up is not run by the city of Hammond, it's not run by my administration at all. It's completely independent of us, and it's an advisory commission to the Hammond Police Department. So I'm not sure why Ms. King's so angry about this, but I want you to know, Hammond wasn't dictating anything. We weren't telling them what we were gonna do, that's not how it works when you work with the Department of Justice. They tell you, this is what I want you to do, Mayor. If you say no, I don't know what happens when you say no, because we didn't say no. We said, yes, sir. That sounds like a good idea, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I'm only suggesting that, you know, her issues is probably with the Board of Public Works and Safety, which is handled by the Law Department and Police or Fire Department and whatever. Whether she took that to them, I mean, that's what I'm recommending, that she should go there and, you know, put that on record there.
Councilman Markovich, she can go to the Board of Works and Safety, that's her prerogative.
Right.
They need every week, every Thursday morning.
That's what I was suggesting, because, you know, a lot of this, we don't have anything to do with that.
Right. And it was an executive order, by the way, signed, and that's the way it was requested. Like I said, we weren't driving the bus on this issue. I wasn't saying, well, listen here, Mr. Bergeron, this is the way we want to do it. It does not work that way with the federal government.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm just gonna say this, that we had a Human Relations Commission meeting this past week, and Councilwoman Vines was there present as well, and some of the members that are on the board, and the conversation came up in regards to this particular issue. And I think the frustration within the community is that the people that initially were involved in the process were not included. For whatever reason-
That could, Councilman.
Well, it was a grassroots organization from within the community that was actively beating prior to this even becoming a major issue. And that's when me and Councilman Henhosseh also walked in front of City Hall. It wasn't against the police department, we were against the issues that were, they were facing at that particular, from that particular incident. Never, and I want this to be on record, never has any one of those individuals that were supposedly mistreated contacted Councilman Higgs. I was contacted from people within the community to get involved with community issues. Since that incident, they still have not contacted me. So what do you do? I can't sit and fight for someone that's not fighting for themselves. That's the reality of it is. But Ms. King is trying to get some clarity as to how the process started and who signed the document in the end. That's where she's trying to get her understanding.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Representatives from Hammond Human Relations signed the document. The mayor signed the document. The police chief signed the document. The NAACP of the city of Hammond signed the document. The ministers of Hammond, the ministerial alliance of Hammond, signed the document and other people as part of those groups. There was 12 people that signed the document, and quite frankly, I don't know who was in the meetings, and I don't know who wasn't in the meetings. I wasn't either. And quite frankly, it's probably best if we're not in there in a situation like that. It was being run by Ken Bergeron and the United States Department of Justice. The United States Department of Justice, I can't help it if a grassroots committee in Hammond got overruled by the Department of Justice. They did. When the Department of Justice gets involved, grassroots organizations don't matter anymore. Neither does city. The federal government always wins. And they drive the bus. And if there's a problem with this agreement, take it up with the Department of Justice, because they're the ones that drove the bus on this issue. That's simple. Complaining to me, what is that gonna do? Complaining to you, what's that gonna do? If you guys wanna fight against the federal government-
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I don't, Mayor, I don't think they're fighting against the federal government. I think the fact of the matter is that the people that signed the document were initially, were not a part of it. I don't know how it all transpired. All I know is I received a phone call, Reverend Pope called me and said, hey, we're having meetings, would you like to attend? I said, if the people that initially were involved in the process were not included, I wasn't gonna attend the meeting.
Reverend Cobb signed the document.
I know he signed the document. I was here when each organization, the ministerial alliance, but did he sign for all the ministers? You said the ministerial alliance.
I think he signed on behalf. I'm not sure what his capacity was, but he was one of the signers.
I would think they would all be in agreement. I would think they would've all be in agreement, that mean Reverend Gillis...
Councilman Higgs, I'm not sure how...
I'm just saying, the ministerial alliance is a variety of ministers. So you got Reverend Collins, Reverend Colby Sanders, but neither here or there. Again, as it relates to the NAACP, did the president of the Hammond Chapter, NAACP?
Yes.
Did he go before the entire chapter?
I'm not sure, but he signed, he signed it. He signed it. I'm not sure who he went before. And so did the State NAACP, uh, the young lady works for the State NAACP signed it as well. So the state...
Barbara Bowden.
Yes, that's her, thank you, Councilman. She signed it, so did Reverend Buck, on behalf of the Hammond Chapter. I'm not sure how they got the authority to do that, that's not my prerogative. They signed the document. Maybe they felt a little bit of pressure from the US Department of Justice. Maybe they felt like the Department of Justice is, they're the big boys at the table, and they're gonna tell us what to do.
I don't have anything else to say, I'm done with it. Uh, a motion adjourned.
Second.
No, we have a couple more speakers yet. Mr. George Stoya? Final speaker will be Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
My name is Alvin Cheeks, eight thirty-two Merrill Street. I was first invited to the Steen Center by the US Attorney's Office in the Washington Branch of the Justice Department to attend a meeting with some other Hammond residents. After that, I didn't hear back from the US Attorney until the day before the press conference. I was in the hospital, I had one of my friends to come get me, um, the hospital recommended that I did not leave the hospital. I instructed my friend, if he had to bring me in the hospital bed, to bring me to the meeting. Um, at our Human Relations Commission meeting, I asked Mr. Mullins on four occasions, were there secret meetings taking place? He said, no. The Justice Department said that there were no meetings, there's an email that says that. Then he turned around and said that there were confidential meetings taking place. I got investigated by the local office of the Justice Department, they looked into my background, I mean, it, it happens. The guy from the Justice Department approached me in the hallway, I never met him before in person, and he, he said some things I might not say, but the whole point is, is that it's something going on, and now the tape from the meeting that you attended and Janet Vines attended... Councilwoman Vines attended, that tape is destroyed.